So this is a joint meeting, DPW Subcommittee, Town Council, July 28th. The Veterans Room, I'm calling the meeting to order. Roll call, Councilor Marquetti, I'm here. Councilor Steves?
Present.
Councilor Dow?
Present.
Citizen Member Lozo?
Present.
Citizen Member Spleen?
Present.
Thank you. Before we continue on, there's a couple of things. First of all, we're going to move Agenda Item Number Five to after Agenda Item Number Nine, because the Town Manager is in a meeting right now. So, we don't need a motion.
No, we can just move it.
So we'll move Five down to Nine B. And the other thing I would like to add, I'll suspend the rules to add our agenda items, discuss update on road improvement products in town. Somebody would like to make that motion?
Motion.
I'll second it.
We'll make that Nine C then. All those in favor? Okay. All right. Consider and approve Agenda Item Number Three. Consider and approve Joint DPW Town Council Meeting Minutes of July 5th, 2022.
Motion.
Sorry.
Everybody have a chance to look it over?
I just have one comment, huh?
Yep.
Under Item Number Five, you mentioned Matt says questions why all projects need a facilitation manager. Actually, what he said was that he was recommending that we have a facilities manager. He wasn't asking why we wouldn't have one, he was recommending.
All right. I'll make that change. Anybody else? All those in favor?
Abstained.
Abstained, all right. Agenda Item Number Four, Citizens Forum, if anybody in the audience would like to speak to anything that's not on the agenda. Speak now. Okay. All right. Agenda Item Number Six, Review and Discuss the Appointment of Kevin Spleen, Department of Public Works Subcommittee for a One-Year Term Effective Immediately Through July 31st, 2023. State Ethics in Good Standing. Entertain a motion.
So move.
Any comments? Councilor Dow?
Did you like it being on the?
Yep.
You like it?
Yep.
Good luck.
Thanks for yourself.
He was crazy enough to stick around.
I don't think he's tall enough.
Kevin's done a pretty good job.
Yeah, I'd like to say that he asked a lot of good questions. His background definitely shows when he participates, so I think that's a good one.
All right, all those in favor? Kevin even asked me. All right. Agenda Item Number Seven, Review and Discuss the Appointment of Steve Lozo to Department of Public Works Subcommittee for a One-Year Term Effective Immediately Through July 31st. In Ethics in Good Standing. Entertain a motion. Any comments?
Mr. Lozo's in too.
Mr. Lozo, I don't think your brother wants you or not.
Steve has a lot of history, a lot of experience in town.
Welcome back, George.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right. Anything else? All those in favor? Agenda Item Number Eight, Review and Discuss the Proposal from Tyne Bond for Design Services Related to Kohasi Reservoir Pumping Station Improvements for $29,000. Entertain a motion to recommend that Council approve the contract with Tyne Bond based on this proposal to be funded from project account number 63710 Kohasi Water Pump Replacement and approve the Town Manager to sign all the written documents.
So move.
Okay, so this is actually, this account was set up in FY16, I believe. We've known that we needed to replace the Kohasi reservoir pumps or pump for some time, but for some reason it was never moved on by others. Well, last month, the pumps went down. Typically, around that same time, we would start pumping from Kohasi into Reservoir Four in order to keep our supply cool and prevent color and odor issues. Instead of doing that, and instead of pulling directly from Reservoir Five, we're instead continuing to pull from Reservoir Three, but letting water trickle down from Five to Four to Three in order to keep the supply fresh and prevent color and odor issues, which has been pretty successful so far. It's how we used to run, but it's not our typical, typically how we pull water in the summers now, but it's been working so far. But with drought concerns and the possibility of lower level, of lower reservoir levels, which right now we're at about 94%, so we're not too concerned with that right now, but with that going, with the pumps going down, we're just concerned that we want to get them up as soon as possible so that in an emergency situation, we can pull from Kohasi Reservoir over to Reservoir Four. So Steve Gregoire, the Water Department Manager, had already been in discussions with Tyne Bond before this happened, so they were able to put together a quick proposal, and we'd like to move on this as soon as possible so that we can get the work started as soon as possible and get out of this emergency situation, this potential emergency situation. If there's any questions, will you?
Councilor Steves?
Matt, I was curious, why did the town start pumping from Kohasi Reservoir to the other reservoir?
I think it was just the easiest way to get water from Kohasi to our filtration plant. There's, it's, I'm not sure exactly how much capacity Kohasi has, but because it's in kind of a different watershed area, it needs to be pumped over to the reservoirs that end up at Three where the water filter plant is.
Cheers. Anyone else? Yeah. Anyone else?
Am I correct? This is the original equipment when this was built in the 60s?
I believe so, yeah.
So like 60 years ago, got out of this?
Quite old, and we are proposing to, I think the DAP at one point had advised us to put in two pumps, but they've backed off of that sense, so the plan is to put in one pump and have a spare on site to drop in in case of. Which will give us more redundancy than we have now, which obviously we don't have any if the pump went down, and we are down. There's no contingency for getting water, getting water from Kohasi without that pump.
Anything else? Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor? Agenda Item Number Nine, Discuss Review and Assistive Program WRAP Contract with MassDOT. Entertain a motion to recommend that Council verify the WRAP contract and approve the Town Council to sign all the written documents.
This was a.
Go ahead, Matt.
This was a program that was set up after last winter, or approved after last winter. It provides about half of our Chapter 90 allotment worth of money for use during this fiscal year, so expenses between the beginning of this month and the end of next June on certain things such as road resurfacing, line striking, road grates, like storm grates, there's not, it's a much narrower scope than Chapter 90, but we just need to sign these documents in order to actually start spending money. You don't need to get your projects approved, but you just need to make sure they're eligible expenses and then submit for reimbursement after the fact. So we have somewhere around $266,000 available through this program. I was thinking, one thing I want to do is line stripping throughout the town. Usually, we do waterborne paint every year. That's getting harder and harder to do because now the price to do the entire town has gone over $10,000. I'd like to look into doing thermoplastic paint throughout the town so that it lasts a few years and we can kind of treat it more as a capital expense than an every-year maintenance expense. That's one of the things I'd like to do. I'd also like to add Kung Zun back into the road improvement projects under this program, funded out of this program. But obviously, any specific projects that are going to be approved under it will end up coming back to council, I assume, unless they, unless there's possibly some expenses under ten that we end up using and don't need a contract on them. But yeah, mostly I assume we're going to use it on larger projects that will end up in front of council anyway. That's my thoughts on that for now, but this is just the approval of the contract, approves the Town Manager to sign it so we can start spending money on it. Definitely want to get all of this money spent before June, so that we don't lose it. Chapter 90 money's rollover, this does not, so if we don't spend it by next June, we'll lose it.
All right. Thank you. Kevin?
Matt, when can we start?
Now.
As soon as it's signed, we can get it?
Yep. As soon as we receive a confirmation from the state, we don't even have to have a signed contract from the state, we just have to have their receipt of our signed contract, basically, and we can start doing work.
Councilor Steves?
So is this like a special program? Is this an annual thing?
Yeah, it's a one-time thing as far as we know. I mean, if we have tough winters in the future, it's supposed to be, it's supposedly for a tough winter, I don't think it's really any harder than us than usual, maybe less so, but anyway, the money's there and we're going to use it.
Absolutely. Thank you. Anything else? Anything else? All right, thank you. The only question I have is, am I missing something or is this all we're getting here? I mean, it's, that's it?
Yep. That's the MassDOT standard contract, but it's not the authorized signatory listing. I probably did really need to include in the backup.
I know information about the program?
No, you can look up WRAP program on the state, it'll have, it has a good description of it, basically what I just told you, but you can also read all the other full expenses and stuff like that.
All right. Okay, thank you. All those in favor? Oh, hold on. Councilor Steves?
Yeah, just a quick, I just want to clarify here, the anticipated start date, it may be, it says the contract allegations may be incurred as of July 1st, 2022. As opposed to after July 1st, 2022.
Yeah.
So I need to double check that, because we're trying to do this.
This is, yeah, as of July 1st, 2022, so as of the beginning of this month.
Yeah, this month.
Money can be spent under this program. I believe it was, the program was known about before this, so you could have signed the contract with MassDOT that last month, but no, you couldn't start spending money in the program until July. Ever, all monies have to be spent within this fiscal year.
Okay.
Anything else?
Yeah, I guess so.
All right, thank you. All those in favor? Five to zero, motion passed. Okay, we'll go back to Agenda Item Number Five, which is Nine B, the Town Manager, I thought he would be there by now, but I'll just proceed then.
Mr. Chair, real quick. I know you added another agenda item to it. Want to go over that?
Mine, what we got first?
Yeah.
Let's see, more time to come.
All right, Review, discuss, um, I'm sorry. Discuss update on road improvement plan projects in town. Matt, could you just give us an update on some of the projects in town?
Sure. Is this specifically the Road Improvement Plan 22 project?
Well, why don't we just go around the table, you guys ask him about updates?
So they did. I was impressed, they did Cisco Street, Ryder Street, they did an awesome job on that. Worcester Street was done two weeks ago. That came out good, I didn't know if we were going to fix the other seven or eight laterals on Worcester Street, that, those are the bad ones, closest to, uh, the Knights of Columbus, I forget what it's called now.
Yeah, it's the church over there.
The churches, so say from United Lends to where the church is now, it's like seven or eight laterals that, they're probably past that three timeframe, but those are the ones that are the worst. I mean, they're all some, a couple inches.
See if, I can't recall if it's past the three years or not.
I don't know, that's something to check into, but those are the bad ones technically. And then, you know, what's, I, we all see South Street starting to get dug up now, so the question would be is what are they going to do with everything off of Everett Street? How long do those residents have to wait until?
I think we should wait until next year. I can, I can ask them to, I'm going to take a closer look at the trench, find areas where anything's settling, have them cut them back and repave them ahead of, ahead of the winter, and then next year they can, next year, we can either try to get them to kick in for full mill and overlay, which was on my list this past year, but I advise us to hold off until after settlement period for the national grid trenches. And we'll have to figure out how we can, how we can make that work if they're still willing to do the same thing they did on Main Street, pick in money, or if, or if we need to find some other solution with them.
And then, the only other two things were, have we got any more update as far as Main Street goes?
Yes, I reached out to them on Monday, they said they'd have a response to me by the end of the week, I have not received it yet.
All right, and the only other thing is, I got to call on what the story is with South Street, because it hasn't been anywhere there in a few weeks now.
Why? They're working today.
Some people are kind of asking, you know, two weeks no one's working.
Well, because they began cutting and cut into our new pavement on South Street before I even issued a permit.
I meant South Street, from Westfield going to the town line, that project.
Oh, okay, yeah, that, we had a meeting on Monday, they got the, I mean, Tuesday, they got the 20-inch valve in, so they're going to be proceeding with the activation of the 20-inch main for a little service on Monday, next Monday. They have a bunch of, a pretty good amount of drainage work still left to do out there. That's going to, we had put in a 90-day settlement period after excavations to let that settle. With their current schedule, that's going to push us into probably December, which we don't want to be paving in December. So it's either, we're either going to, they're proposing a change order with a time extension. I'm going to bring that to you guys. If it, if it's agreeable to you guys to push paving into next year, I think we'll get the best product. We'll address the paving concerns as much as possible to get us through the winter and then reconstruct the road next year. Otherwise, the only option will be to cut the settlement period, probably go to 30 days to pave them in October, November, which isn't what I would advise. But we should be getting that proposal from Taiwan in the next week or so, or through Taiwan, it's coming from a contract or through Taiwan.
Anything else? All right, thank you.
Councilor Steves, I'm going to follow up actually on that, I just want to clarify, so does that mean that the South Street project is just going to end at Wester, or is it going to be at East?
The South Street project ends at the entrance to Westland. Currently.
Going from the border to West?
From Sturbridge to Westland.
Yeah, okay. So we're not, so, because the section going farther toward Main Street is also a thorough check?
Yes.
And that really means it gets more.
That's where National Grid is currently replacing our mains, and they're anticipating that job to take one and a half to two years. It's a little over a mile, I think, of Main, South Oaks, Sales, I don't know, I think Sales is a separate project.
I think Sales is mostly not.
They, I've got a plan request for some more work on Sales.
This section from South to Two Main is going to sell?
I think from, I think from Main to South, the other side, they have a regulator then where they do also need to do some more work, they probably have to move that area, but, but yeah, this, this project includes South, South Lovely, either Winter or Water, I can't remember what they're called, Oaks. And I might be missing that one.
If we can take advantage of that, to like pave lovely, that's, that's.
We'll at least get a deep to white mill and overlay, or whenever we, or do a good, a good solid trench that's cut back and properly open back to.
Is that, Councilor? Hold on, I'm going to go with George first.
You got, you got, there's a lot of here.
Yeah, I have a question. Matt, I have a question. You mentioned that you're going to go into December, that's why it's closed in November.
Yeah, no, the, the 90-day settlement period, based on their current schedule, would push us into December, but that's not an option. I was saying that we're either going to, they're going to propose a change order that includes a contract extension so that we can reconstruct the road in the spring. If that's agreeable to the council, because it has to be approved by council, then that's my, that's what I would advise, and that's what I would like to do. Otherwise, we'll have to shorten this up.
All right, thank you.
This, this.
Matt, the National Grid work, I've asked this before, when you're doing the paving, trenching, you're doing laterals, doesn't that by law say that the laterals are 50 feet or less between that they have to do the whole street?
The exact wording, I think, is any patches by the same utility within 50 feet of each other have to be paved as one whole. So yes.
So I'm assuming South Street is going to be lateral changes there, and those lateral changes are going to fall probably within the 50 feet.
Not only.
So the eight-foot overlay really means nothing because the laterals are still going to be there.
Yeah, not only are there going to be a lot of laterals, but I believe, I mean, if you look, if you're driving from Main Street, they're proposing to put their new main on the right side, and if you look on the left side, it's patch, 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 patch. All of those will be within 50 feet of the, of the trench, and I'm going to require them. I've already put in their permit that they need to mill and overlay, curb to curb, at least the first 100 feet of, of South Street because they cut into the new pavement there. So I put in at least 100 feet of curb to curb, but because of all those patches along the left side going from Main Street, I'm anticipating that they'll have to mill and overlay curb to curb from Main to about Sales. At some, at some point, the trench jogs over to the other side, and they may, they may be able to get away with a eight-foot wide or, or a fifth-foot centerline mill on that side, past Sales or somewhere around the hospital and beyond.
I, I think the house and ladder, the laterals are exactly, but if you go beyond Scale Street, the laterals, like we were going to be close to that 50 feet, the whole length of that project.
Yeah, and in a case like that, I will, I will require it.
And it's just like Everett Street, Everett Street, the same situation over there is the laterals now are 50 feet or less, and if you look on Worcester Street, they just paved, laterals that are done from the beginning of the new paving were quite a ways up, are 50 feet or less, and they didn't pave that right-hand side.
The west?
Worcester Street. If you go look at the laterals on Worcester Street, they just paved, the new laterals that have been paved up, and I think if you look, they're pretty close to 50 feet or less, and I'm going to ask if that's the case, has it been measured to force them into paving the whole width of the road?
Yeah, I'll have to check. I don't, 50 feet is not that much from house to house, most houses, I mean, obviously with, there's a lot of houses with less furniture than our zoning requires now, but generally, there's more than 50 feet between houses, so I have to, I have to make.
Like with East Road, I mean, with Everett Street, there's a lot of locations within that Everett Street location that are all 50 feet or less, and I know from the others' direction was that they were just going to do an eight-foot overlay or less, and I can't, and I don't understand why they're trying to force them to do the whole width of the road if the laterals are 50 feet or less.
Yeah, if they're 50 feet or less, we will require it.
But it didn't, I know there was future talk to this group here, is to change the regulation that I think when they do a whole street like Everett Street, that they're forced, if they're doing laterals all the way down, that they're forced to do the street instead of just the eight-foot overlay and a patch of laterals. Okay, thank you.
Councilor Marquetti?
Matt, I have a question on a lot of the road work, I think, you know, we talked about it, I think you covered it. I just was talking to a couple of councils about funding sources, and TM's here, I don't know if DPW in the future can entertain looking at getting the sales of Wells money towards the roads and sidewalks. The money sitting there, I know that we were complaining, not complaining, but requesting some extra monies for some of these other streets that we might not get done this year, and we're going to let the money sit in that account, and I think maybe we could better utilize it if we could move the, I think it's 1.1, 1.2?
So.
If we could shift that building money into the roads and sidewalks, it would give you more money to do more roads and more upgrades. Just a suggestion, I, there's a lot of money in the town budget, and this one here is just sitting there, and instead of letting it sit there, let's put it to work for ourselves.
Good idea, that's a pretty good idea, maybe for the next DPW Subcommittee, we'll put that on the agenda.
Sure.
All right. Anybody else have anything? Councilor?
The water main break on High Street, how does that stand right now?
We've closed off the water, no water is leaking past the valves that we inserted, and, well, the valve that we inserted on High Street and the valve that we closed on Janet, Janet and in the field, so at this point, our water system isn't having any impact on the, on the whole, we haven't, we haven't gone any further with, with modeling, we'll need to model the, the area hydraulically in order to determine what we can do to get the redundancy that, that pipe, the redundancy and the resiliency that that pipe gave us and the benefits to our water, our chlorine modules and stuff like that.
And how long is this going to take, seeing so it's been a few weeks now, and they still have to put a temporary patch on there, and the ground will keep sinking, creating potholes and washing into the neighborhood driveways and yards?
I can address that with the Water Department. We knew that the patch was bad, and we brought him, they, they had to excavate it again in order to put a cap past the valve because it's an old pipe, it wasn't exactly round, they had to form the live insertion valve in order to seat in the pipe properly. They were, they stopped the water completely, but they weren't, PetroTech wasn't 100% sure that it will stop the water forever, I mean, not, obviously it won't stop it forever, but they weren't 100% sure that it was going to be completely watertight for as long as we could see, so we also wanted to put a cap on the end of that. So they re-excavated it recently in the past, so I'll address the patch with them. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anything else, something? I just, can you give me an update on projects that are ongoing like Ellis Road, Mar Street, and Mechanic Street, are those on time?
I'm at, with PAP on Friday, and we took a look at Ellis Road and discussed North and Mechanic. In order to get the work done this season, we're probably going to have to scale back our drainage upgrades on North Street a bit, but I am planning next Tuesday, hopefully, to, to get to North with, with the camera truck and inspect the drain lines so that we're not leaving any, any lines that are going to cause potential sinkholes if they're rotted and collapsing, so we're going to, we're going to focus our attention on what absolutely needs to be done out there in terms of drainage and not, probably not replace every basin with a deep sump like we were hoping to, but we will upgrade it so that we don't have future problems with collapsed pipes and sinkholes.
All right. And Ellis Road is on time? I don't know.
Yep.
All right. Anybody else, have anything else?
Councilor Steves? I think, you know, a couple of days ago about red with me?
Yes, it was patchy.
Okay.
Today or yesterday.
I know, I respond to council lots. I thought we might have known as well.
Uh, you said it was on the list.
I called, I think I did, council called.
Alright, we have one last question, council, hold on, council.
Uh, Matt, I have a question. Um, from where you take a right to go to the high school, all the way to Ellis Road, there was money appropriated for that section at one point with Helen was here. What ever happened to that money? It never was repaid.
Gulfwood?
Yeah, Gulfwood. That section from.
Torrey all the way up to Ellis?
Up to Ellis. It's, it was, it was money appropriated for that, I remember. And then Helen moved it.
I don't know during my time.
I don't know. I don't remember.
Yeah, it was.
Talking about the idea of doing it and putting it in priority and then kind of get dropped off the priority list.
Right, but there was money, there was money allocated for that.
Right.
There was.
And the bridge came in on Mill Street.
Right.
Had something to do with the bridge was like.
Right, they used the money there.
Oh, okay.
Well, whatever happened, because that section from there to there is not much, but it's terrible.
It's awful.
Yeah. A couple of things on that. I mean, I did, uh, I did put it on our list last year that we picked roads from. We chose to do Ellis, but not to do the remainder of Gulfwood. Uh, I believe I had Ellis estimated for around four hundred thousand and the remainder of Gulfwood around six. So it would have replaced Mechanic and North, uh, if we had done that. Now.
Could you put that back on the list?
It's still, I mean, it's.
Tony's on the list, yeah.
Still on the list to be done whenever, whenever we have money. And prioritize it.
Let's take a look at Ellis, see if we can use, utilize that, some of that money. Alright, if, uh, nobody else, has anybody else on this one? Uh, Mr. Town Manager's to fill you in. We moved agenda to number five to the end, so it could be here.
Okay.
Okay. So review and discuss the Town Manager's appointment of Jonathan Kamasi, if I'm last reading correctly, as Town Engineer Assistant for a three-year term, second immediately from June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. State ethics in good standing. Entertain a motion to recommend to Town Council for confirmation. Somebody wanna make a motion? Okay, Mr. Town Manager.
Can I just ask a question from my own identification? I didn't live in a few year term associated with the position. That was used to me.
That's on the agenda. It was just on the agenda, yeah. Now, to be honest with you, Mr. Town Manager, I didn't even get this agenda until it was already posted online.
That, the only caveat I might say is I don't know that we've done that with, um, non-department heads or officers in the town. We have indefinite appointments or, um, like with police and fire. So as you all know with the charter, it says the appointment on the recommendation of the police chief, the fire chief, the department underneath. And, and all of those, I don't know that there's been terms of years, but when we've appointed department heads or officers, there have been terms associated. So I don't know if that could be, um, I have been attending to other things this week, so I did not get to review that as well. So that may be a leftover from something else. So I know Councilor Lava has his hand.
Just a, just a quick.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Do you have a three-year term or are you indefinite?
I'm indefinite. As interim, I believe I was indefinite.
As the engineer?
No, not as the engineer. I was not appointed because nobody in the DPW has ever been appointed in the past.
Oh, that's true.
No, and that was, um.
Yes, I, I, yeah.
Counselor Marketti talked to me about it. I mean, prior to this date, when I got here and I did have, not to go off too far on the conversation, when I got here, I read the charter and I was told that we really only did it traditionally with police and fire. Um, and I did have that conversation. We talked about it at some point when we got to the charter or, or some of the rules to talk about it. But Counselor Marketti did, one night somebody asked about it and we pointed out, and I said he was correct, that the charter does say, um, police department upon the recommendation, the police chief, fire, and DPW department upon recommendation, the director.
And I understand that. The reason why I was asking Matt, if Matt does not have a three-year term and he's just appointed, then the person underneath him should be the same design, um, appointed indefinitely. That's the only thing I was bringing up. Uh, just one other question. It has to do with the, the job description. I know I had a discussion with the manager. I'm not on DPW. Um, and this position evolved as we, as we talked. And I was under the impression, and correct me if I'm wrong, and, and tell me what it is. I thought this gentleman, that, the, whoever the candidate was, was gonna be hired. And one of the reasons why this position was created was because of the lack of oversight on the trenching and, and the, you know, in other words, the street work, sewer water and, you know, wash making sure the compaction gets done and all that. Am I correct in saying that that is what the duties are? Matt?
That's one of the many duties.
Okay.
So this. Just, uh, Counselor Lava and I were talking about this and I explained the title of the position and how it evolved and changed. And he, he did a little bit of head scratching, you know, he was like, I thought it started on oversight. And I said, we had talked about maybe a part-time seasonal person. Uh, I know the DPW director then and, and HR people, there was a conversation, came up at one point with an assistant town engineer. Then it got changed to a town engineer assistant. There were some, uh, requirements, um, and preferences that were in there that were changed. So it made the position much more broad, added in duties of working alongside the engineer for stormwater, um, other things perhaps with CAD, V I S mapping and a variety of different tasks. So it, it broadened, so.
Yeah, I was, I was under the impression it was gonna plow in the wintertime and, you know, it was gonna have a, basically, number one purpose was the inspections of the, uh, oversight on the construction sites. That's what I thought was the, you know, if, if there's other things to do to keep it busy, I understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for you. So, the assistant engineer, he's an engineer or he's just?
So it's no longer an assistant town engineer, it's a town engineer assistant. And we took away any requirements that they be an engineer. There are preferences, but not requirements for certain levels of education or experience or accommodation. So, um, it was designed so it could be much more flexible. I think, you know, listening to subcommittee before, they didn't want a second engineer on staff. They wanted more of a utility player. And so this is not a management position. Um, I would say it's a mid-level or upper middle level, um, employee. I don't think it's gonna be under the union. I think it would be non-union, but it's not a management position. They would report to the town engineer.
So what kind of experience you have?
Three to five years of construction or design career.
Are you asking the job description or the candidate?
Candidate. What kind of experience to, to do what we asking for?
So, okay. With your indulgence, Mr. Chairman, I think we've moved into, so. Because it is the recommendation of the manager, and we're doing this for the first time in many years, um, I try to participate in any, I don't always participate in the police, in the fire. Um, those recommendations come straight to me. This is new, that was the interim. So I participated where possible in all the interviews. I tried to attend all of them. Some of it was remote, some of it was in person. Um, so, you know, I listened to, to what we talked about last year. That's why we got to the point of having a position where we would do some oversight. I know the prior DPW director said there were other tasks that they could utilize a person for, so the thought was to create a full-time position that would also allow for stormwater. So I've also listened to council talk about, um, it's come up a couple of times. You know, we'd like it if we had candidates from Southbridge. We have, you know, we were fortunate to get a bunch of applicants. Um, Mr. Kamasi not only lives in Southbridge, he's currently a, a town employee. He's been working for us for almost five years. I've had the opportunity to, uh, see him in action and interact with him in town hall. Uh, I did sit in on a part of his interview that day remotely. But at the end of the day, the interesting part is the interim DPW director is Mr. DeJardin, who was trying to lead the panel in the interview. Mr. DeJardin's regular role is the town engineer. And this person would be reporting directly to Matt if, when Matt returns to the position as town engineer. So we did look at all of the candidates and all of their various attributes. Uh, I, I know from my own experience with Mr. Kamasi, he's been, uh, he's always stepped up. He's got a great record in terms of showing up for plowing. Uh, he's taken a lot of additional courses. He's working outside to get his bachelor's. And as a manager and as someone who works a lot with staff and trying to, uh, work with morale and different things, I've been trying to promote internally here in the town hall. I want to be able to foster growth within the departments. Um, by promoting internally, it creates other opportunities for advancement for other people in the DPW. So when the panel met and afterwards, Mr. DeJardin, um, told me that he wanted, we all, I was part of the panel, but when he said he wanted, um, Mr. Kamasi to reply, he made the recommendation and having worked with him, I will back that recommendation from Mr. DeJardin. So it's based on a lot of factors, uh, and what I've seen, the work ethic and willingness to learn and chip in for Mr. Kamasi. Again, like I said, uh, his attendance and snow plowing and I've watched him work and interact with citizens and staff in this building along the way because he's been in here. Um, he's done a lot of, uh, maintenance and other projects, so he's a well-rounded individual. Uh, I know one of the other things, and it will probably come up in discussion. I mean, he's been a operator, snowplow operator, truck driver, and he briefly worked in the private sector in that industry. And he ran his own business in the private sector, uh, in food catering business. So he's, has management experience and, um, experience working with vendors and customer service relations. And one of the key components to this, not only is the oversight, having the construction, but you're gonna have to interface with a wide variety of people, the contractors, you're gonna have to interface with the companies. You're gonna be doing stuff with stormwater where you may be entering on people's properties, um, looking at outfall pipes. So you're gonna have to interface with a wide variety of people in the community and staff. So a lot of that was in my mind when we were doing the interview and when we talked about the various candidates. And when Mr. DeJardin said he, um, he endorsed Mr. Kamasi, I, based on my experience, I, I agree.
Is Mr. Kamasi here?
Uh, I believe he's in the seat. Yes.
So, Mr., uh, Counselor Dow, did he answer your question?
No.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
What experience he have? So we're gonna teach him?
Um, his, well, I can let Matt speak more to it because he works for the DPW perfect.
Over the past five years, he's worked for the DPW, uh, for nearly five years. Um, he's been operating heavy machinery, uh, he's been.
Excuse me, sorry to interrupt you. I understand he used machines, stuff like that. He had experience on the road, construction, inspecting thing and.
Yeah.
Are we gonna send him to learn all this?
Yes, I mean, he has a, a basic understanding of road construction and, and, uh, and work regarding, uh, stormwater and, and, uh, road construction. And yes, we can also, uh, he's shown a incredible, uh, enthusiasm and aptitude for learning. So if we have to send him to, uh, to some courses for, such as NICE, uh, NICE courses for inspection of roadways and stuff like that, that wouldn't be a problem for him, I'm sure.
Another question. You move in a gentleman, he already have experience for plowing and using, uh, trucks and equipment, whatever. And he's been years of experience and you moving him up, you have somebody to replace his position at that moment? Or we will get to the point that we're gonna plow and do thing, now we're stuck, we have nobody there?
We've al, we've already interviewed for, uh, I believe, four candidates for, uh, M M E O position. We have one currently open and as soon as he, uh, as soon as he steps out of, uh, his role as M M E O, we will be able to hire, uh, another individual immediately.
Did they have the C D L license or we're gonna waive that as well too?
Nope, every candidate.
We keep waving things to keep, you know, giving people position at the end, you know, we, we end up no rule in the town.
Yeah, every candidate, uh, that we interviewed has a C D L.
Counselor, Counselor? Alright, Mr. Laza?
So you're the Town Manager. Mr. Town Manager, how many people are applying to this job?
I don't know the exact number. I think we interviewed, at least I participated in, I couldn't make one of them, I think we had four in that one day. I would have to defer to my HR director in the back of how many people applied and how many. Four, four people.
Are they equally qualified?
Does that answer for you, Mr. Chair?
It's Mr. Town, the Town Manager. If you must have passed it off to her, that's fine.
Go ahead.
Are you, is it to the Town Manager, each myself? Are they equally qualified, each in their own right?
So they all have C D L licenses, they all have.
That's not a requirement of the position.
It's not a requirement, but he, will he be using, uh, and will he be working with any of those machineries? At this new job?
Not necessary.
Poly snow?
Poly snow doesn't require any special.
Using the loader?
He could, uh, uh, he does have a license.
I would like to have seen other, the other candidates to make a decision on this. I mean, I, I read Mr. Kamasi's thing. I have, you know, everything he has on here. But I would like to also know the other candidates and what they had to offer. So I can't make a decision on this.
So, um, I'll, I'll field this one. First of all, I don't know that I'm at liberty or my staff at liberty to talk about any of the other candidates because when we take the applications, we take them in confidence. So that's one. Two, the charter is pretty explicit on how this process works. So if this is the first time we're doing it, you know, we come here with police and fire. We don't ask for all the other police or fire candidates. I've sat here and watched very few questions asked of any of those candidates when it comes through. So the, the way that the process works is the department head makes a recommendation to me and I either recommend it or I don't recommend it. So in this instance, I've recommended it. Um, now, the next step in the process is it is here, um, and then you make a recommendation, favorable or not, and then it goes to the full council for ratification.
It goes that way.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Kevin, did you ask something?
Not right now.
Counselor Steve's, uh, Counselor, sorry.
I understand the process. It's your, it's your recommendation. I was surprised you went in on the, the interviews, all of them. Um, it being your recommendation. I'm having a real problem with this appointment. And I'll be quite honest with you. Um, the way it started out and what I thought this position was gonna be was exactly what Joe Dow said. It was a construction inspector. And we originally wanted a part-time retired guy where you have to pay a lot of money. And the pool wasn't there, so we went to the next step and the thing kind of evolved. What bothers me is when I'm told that we have overly qualified candidates that we didn't appoint. What happens then, I sit there and say, overly qualified? Why wouldn't you grab the overly qualified one? The exact quote was, it could have been management. Usually in the private sector, we grab a guy like that in the lower stages and he grows in the department. As, and if you think he's gonna be management material. For me, I think HR struck out on this one and I think the manager missed it also, that we have a candidate that's overly qualified, which they both admitted. And I'm gonna sit here and you're gonna ask me, that's one of the finest gentlemen in DPW back there. And, and I feel, and I, I call him a friend and we socialize together. But I sit here as a counselor and you're asking me to do something. Now you know the, the problems that we've been through on our roads. Trust your department that trust and verify. When we turn around and look at the headaches we've had in the last two years, the last thing I wanted to do was take somebody that's overly qualified and not put them in those trenches. The guys that actually built water companies, built roads, sewer, gas, understanding compaction, understanding the construction field. That's what the intent of this position was. He wasn't supposed to be the guy that runs around doing all these other things. If you have other things to fill in, I'm not, we do that in the private sector. But right now, I gotta be honest with you, he's one of the finest DPW guys we have, but he's not qualified for this position. Not by the constructed standard that I'm used to using on a day-to-day basis, sewer water, you know, the things that we had complaints about. And remember, it's the headaches that we had in the last two years that created the position. Thank you.
Just comment, Mr. Kevin? If I'm not mistaken, we brought this position and it was vetted, it went through subcommittee and it was dissected. And then it went up to council. I see you shaking your head.
Go ahead.
It went through and it was added to the budget. So it was passed by the DPW subcommittee, I wanna say, and then the full council. So to say it's a surprise that it's here today as something that people didn't know about, um, it, it's gone through. I mean, yes, Counselor Lava and I had some discussions about things. You know, we have our differences of opinion. I'm not gonna get into everything, but, you know, I have. of opinion, I'm not going to get into everything, but you know, I have been in the process of running large-scale departments with a variety and mix of people. I've, wouldn't be the first time in my career I've seen people that may not have all the requirements who turn out to be some of my best employees. I have several people in staff right now. I've had the opposite. So you know, you go on a combination of what you see, what you know, what you've experienced with people and you know, in this particular instance, I can't remember exactly what the Council Loz's points, but I want to comment on, you know, I felt that it was appropriate given all of the circumstances. And the reason why I participated in this is because it was a new position and it was a position that went through a lot of scrutiny and I was told it was going to come here. So I felt that it was relevant that I be in here because I sit in all the other officer and department head positions that are interviewed if they're going to come through subcommittee. So I do some of the police and fire from time to time. So that's the answer to all of those.
All right, thank you. I'll go to Counselor Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You were saying at the beginning, the fire department and the police department come here, you know, the recommendation, but it's a straight job. The police department, police officer, this dude is ones. Fire department, AMT, firefighters, he's knowing what he's applying for. We losing good guy, what he is right now. Experience, know the town by heart, good employee. To put him in a position, we have to teach him and we have to lose his position to find somebody else to come and cover his position and teach him again what this gentleman, no, what we can, like, we approved, you're saying it came to be fun of like here and went to the council for the budget, correct? We approve it for supposed to be assistant manager, assistant engineer. And we refuse that because we're saying that's a lot of money. We want somebody retired, know about a construction experience and because he's not going to stand all day on the side just sitting. I remember I said at the beginning, drinking coffee and smoking and talking because when you dig a hole, it's going to take time to put the pipe, come inspect it all. So now you're moving a good guy from good position to new position to learn it and hire another guy, don't have no clue, and teach him again. So what are we doing? Why we turning, like, we scratching our air like this?
Well, I'd like to respond first. You know, what happens after a while, again, this comes when you manage large-scale operations, you have great people who you need to move up or you lose them. And I want to keep good people and that's why I'm trying to move people. But I will tell you, if you look back, most of the people we hired for police and fire that come through this have zero experience as a police fire. I sat here and we've endorsed people that have the only experience with the police department is they volunteer for cops and kids and I know some of them are our best police officers. So it's not unusual that we take people that may not have any experience in the field, but it's their aptitude, their personality and their desire to learn and work for this community. You know, it happens all the time. So this is a unique situation. I just want to point that out.
Okay, Mr. Smith, or you also, Counselor Dow?
Yeah. The town manager, correct.
All right. Just go ahead.
What I wanted to say was, originally this came up, I was adamant and I spoke about this for months and months when the Main Street project come on, that we need somebody in an oversight, construction position to supervise these roads and I use clerk at work. I agree with what Mr. Loz says, you know, we have thrown out, people retired, people come in and do it. Heather agreed, she came up on an agenda, I mean, to DPW subcommittee where she wanted another engineer. We shot that down in DPW subcommittee and it started World War III because the following night, General Gov had a meeting and they needed to make the vote in order for the job description. Went to that meeting, the following night, shot it down again. That's the last time the DPW subcommittee heard of anything other than the position got posted with job description. So the DPW subcommittee, they were never involved in this whole process at all.
And I may be mistaken. I just wanted to say...
Let me finish. That's what I have my first major problems with that. We were left out of that route the whole entire way. Most of us probably would not have agreed on this job description and how this came up because we were the ones who originally brought up this whole entire thing.
I can't tell you, I may, how, I know it went through subcommittee because I remember being here the night they changed the title and they changed some of the requirements. They started here, may have ended in Gen Gov, I don't know how it crossed though. Because, you know, I work with generally the subcommittee chairs for their agenda, but a lot of times they put, we forward things and whether they go, if somebody doesn't put it on the right one, I'm not always sure. Maybe some person feels they want it because it falls under two different categories. So if I misspoke, they went all the way through this, I'm sorry, but I know it did come through subcommittee, I know it did get changed at subcommittee.
But it didn't get changed at DPW subcommittee, is what I'm saying. So the process was never fully invented, in my opinion. And I feel bad for Mr. Kamasi. Like Mr. Loz said, he's one hell of a worker and I feel bad for him because he's getting a rough end to this right now and he shouldn't be. We constantly are hiring guys that do not meet our requirements in this town for job descriptions. We've done it three times already with the last four people we hired at the DPW. I don't agree with that. And I feel bad, he's a friend of mine, I feel bad for what he's going through right now.
Counselor Stevens?
Okay, first off, Gen Gov has traditionally been the one that handles job descriptions in many capacities. And as you guys know, I said, I would like to point out that when we had that lengthy discussion about this job description, both of you participated in the audience. I know you were there, he might not have been, but I know you were there.
They never talked about the job description. They had table that night.
At Gen Gov, we did, we voted on it. We did have that discussion and we sent it over to the council and the council approved it. The council did approve this job description. And the question I had, oh, I wanted to have directly for the manager for Matt or Mr. Kamasi is, the very first reference in the job description is manage site construction as field resident engineer, maintain daily site work log covering construction activities, et cetera, et cetera. Could you summarize from what your experience was during the course of either seeing him work or in your experience of interviewing him, how you think his experiences will fit that description, that part of the job description? Because that is pretty much the point that I think a lot of us were very concerned about making sure, who do we have something to do with?
Not to put Mr. DeJardin on the spot, but I don't work daily there. He's probably spent the prior of those five years with Mr. Kamasi, so I might draw a few conclusions.
Yeah. So he has been involved in site construction as a DPW worker. So he's familiar with construction, maintain daily site work log covering construction activities. He has taken it upon himself to keep logs of work that he's done and perform reports on the works that he's done, that when he wasn't even prompted to do so. So I don't have any worries about keeping good logs of the work that he's witnessing being done, attend contract meetings, enforce specifications. I mean, that's just a matter of familiarizing himself with the specifications for any specific job or for our town in general. He should be pretty well-versed in the specifications for the town specifically, but any, any other jobs that he may go out and inspect, he'll have to familiarize himself with those specifications just like anybody else would. If there's any, if he has any questions, of course, as a town engineer, he would be able, you know, to, to clarify anything that was not understood. Monitoring contract progress and project schedules, his management experience from owning his own business. I'm sure he had plenty of contracts and schedules that he was following. Verify quantities for invoices. These are, I'd be going back to things that we've already said, he keeps great records of projects that he works on. So I don't have any concerns about his ability to perform this well.
And I just wanted to point out, as far as, since I said too self, I just wanted to point out also that I honestly, given the way our charter is set up, some of the, some of the things that Counselor Loz has said, while I understand where you're coming from, is totally well, is well beyond the council's function. We do not have the right to interview multiple candidates. We have the right to vote up or down on the candidate the manager presents. It is not our job to interview candidates.
I don't know which Loz you're talking about.
I can say, he said it.
See him on camera.
I know better.
You guys look like he said it.
One of you, he said it. It's not our job.
All right, Mr. Lowes, you got something final to say?
Well, I think it's important to note, and I don't want to put Mr. Kamasi on the spot or anything, but I told him this would probably be the first time I went through this process and I noted a couple of members said, you know, they feel bad that he's going through, but I'm sure Mr. Kamasi will tell you that, you know, as a valued employee, I reached out to him and I had a long conversation with him about how this process may play out because it's been the first time that somebody from DPW has gone through. And we talked about all options, you know, which way to go. And I asked him, you know, was, did he want to go forward because I would endorse him in the way. And as you can see, he's here in the seat, he said he wanted me to go forward with his account.
All right, thank you. Anybody else have any...
Oh, okay, all right. So it's interesting that I sat back and I watched and obviously you have subject matter experts that all throughout this room today and they all showed up and all that great stuff. But I will say this is, I personally and professionally believe we micromanage the whole process up until the hiring process. As town counselors and as citizen members. You can agree with me, disagree, I don't care. But I will say this, is there was a comment about moving somebody up and leaving a gap. I wholeheartedly disagree with that prognosis as that person will move on to better, greater things if we don't move the person along. Stagnation will be the number one unless that's your work ethos or ethos where you don't move up, you don't try to move up. And I got to give Mr. Kamasi, this is the fact that he's applied for multiple jobs within the town or within the DPW itself. So I have to give him credit where credit is due and he keeps on trying and I know he gets his education and all that kind of stuff. And education isn't always the culminating fact, I got that. I don't think what the town council or the subcommittees, and it did go to General Gov. And it went all the way from General Gov, multiple meetings, to town council, voted on, I don't know what the vote was, maybe eight, zero, in favor of this requirement. I actually laughed back there because if anybody's watched The Office, the series, and I say it all the time, assistant to the manager, assistant manager, assistant, I thought it was, it became too much at that point in time. But I will sit there and say is, Matt, is he qualified based on this job description?
Yes.
Town manager, is he qualified based on this and based on your professional opinion?
Yes.
Thank you. I won't question why it's being brought at this point in time at DPW, but Counselor Marquette is correct, it's within our charter, you got to deal with it, that's the way it goes. But we would not be questioning all these police and fire the same way it's happening now. So that being said, based on the town council's vote, this is the job description, this is it. And they're saying he's qualified and regardless of the subject matter experts, which I appreciate and I respect in here, but they're not the ones hiring at that point in time or being the HR. I don't think you missed the vote based on job description. You were handed this piece of paper and said, go off and do great things and hire somebody on, and you did that. Now it's brought here and then we say as a town council, hmm, no, we're just kidding, let's move along. So I wholeheartedly disagree with that notion and the fact that he's qualified for this position based on those two individuals over there and the fact that he is sitting here tonight knowing, knowing this could possibly happen, you know, gives him, you know, even more respect at that point in time that he's able to do something like that. That's all I have. I will say if this is all what it is, unless something comes up before the town council meeting, I'll be pulling in favor.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Do you like to point out, they do the hiring, but we vote on it?
Absolutely. No, they appoint...
When, to the earlier statement of the process and we do not do the appointment, I think my brother kind of was talking about that, I wasn't. I know the town manager is supposed to recommend, part of the problem I had was the town manager should have done the full interviews of all of them because it's his appointment. If he wants to hand it off to Matt, that's his choice, but then when the crap hits the fan, it's on him. And when the appointment comes through, whether it be micromanaging, which I don't think we're micromanaging, you have qualified people on subcommittees in the subject area who know more about it than Mr. Kamasi or any of the other candidates. The way we look at it is, it's a small town, we know all the candidates, we're not going to make believe we don't. But when we have people they call overly qualified, statement by the manager, statement by HR, and then the person doesn't get the job, whoever it be, I don't know who the most qualified was. I'm saying shame on HR, they fell on their head, shame on the manager and shame on Matt. Now, they're doing their job and now we're going to do our job. When the public sees a street falling apart or Dresser Street sinking on a brand-new road, this is where the rubber hits the road and it's on council. And then the council is going to turn around, we're going to identify a problem and say, why are you acting like that? The problem with some politicians, they don't want to identify a problem and then have to get the solution. Leave it alone, let's just get along. I've never been that guy, I'm not ever going to be that guy. This is a miscarriage of justice on this appointment. I'm not badmouthing the candidate in front of us, he's a hell of a guy and a top-notch DPW guy. But the thing is, this job here is about construction in the field, not painting lines, not peck hole patching, you're talking structural roadwork. That's where the problem was, in the parking lot, on Main Street, on Dresser Street. Now, am I supposed to put the blinders on and say, general government said this and we said this and we're going to, that's why we got to go this way? I'm tired of the salesmanship coming out of the manager's office to the counselors and the counselors being the salesman. On this one here, I'm sorry, I can't support it and I am going to go to the council and respectfully disagree with my colleagues in a good way because that's all I'm worried about is all of the things that have already hit the fan. Nobody's, some people never learned anything by the mistakes of the past. We'll repeat the mistakes again if we continue on this route. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Dow, you have something new to add?
Thank you. Counselor Adams, you say he needs a description, correct? More change from the, from the first one to be able to have that job. It wasn't, this is, this was one to what, the general, to change the...
Well, this is, this is the job description right here.
Yeah, but it's still the same.
That's the one we voted on.
When?
I mean, I don't remember exactly when it was, two months ago maybe?
So was changed. Same thing where you had to change it to Heather. Somebody was big shop in town, they changed it to Heather to be able to cut the job, that's why everything fell apart now. I'm going to speak up. You can shut me down, you can fire me, you can do whatever you want, but this is what happened. We give the job to Heather, whatever was in the town, and that's what happened. None of the route correct, none of the job was done right because she wasn't qualified. They changed the description of the application to get the job and then look what happened. So now, let's get somebody have some experience. Again, he's a good guy, he's a hard-working guy, I have nothing against him, you know, I support him all the way. He can apply for some position and he's, whatever the field is on, he's changing field. Sorry, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Adams, I'll go to you.
Well, appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just understand, obviously there's a lot of passion going on in here and that's a great thing, you know? But at this point in time, to sit here as a town council and say, what's in this? I didn't even know about it. It got changed, it's asinine and I'll tell you right now, you can get angry all you damn want, I don't care, I'll still sleep tonight. And the fact is, you voted for this. That's it. Job description, they did the process, we can finish up the process, whatever that may take on that Monday. But don't forget, don't act like a lot of us in here going, I really didn't know what the hell was in this before I signed it. And that's what... And that's what I'm hearing right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I appreciate it.
I didn't, I didn't respond.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Qualified, what experience-
Can I respond to him?
What experience he has?
Come on, Mr. Chair, let me respond to him.
What experience he have? What experience? Give me his background, check. Background, what experience?
I'm not on the question.
Okay.
So go away about that top of that wall. What's up to that wall for what?
I voted about this, but he don't have no background experience on this.
Good for you for knowing that and I appreciate you voting on this.
We're not going to have any more discussion on this. Mr. Manager, I'll let you have the last word.
And, you know, I think the discussion, the fact that it was brought forth for the charters, the right thing, it's a healthy discussion. Counselor Allen was right. If this goes wrong, it's my fault. It's not going to be Matt's fault, it's not going to be anybody else's fault and I'll stand by that. And I know who the first person is going to come out and say, Mr. Manager, and we talked about that and he told me that, you know? And I think that's still one of the good things that we have here. I can still talk to Counsel Lozso, he told me exactly what was going to happen and I told him, you know, I would stand by my decision, but if this doesn't work correctly, I fully expect that it's going to come back to me and I'll have to answer it. But I, to the point, Counselor Allen, I don't think we had any candidates in mind or we knew who any of these candidates were. You know, I understand what you said, that something was tailored for somebody specifically. I don't think we tailored this for anybody specifically. It wasn't like this was crafted out for anybody in particular. We came up with a position that we thought would allow us to address oversight and the stormwater on the horizon, a few different things. We interviewed some people. I tried to be a part of all those, you know, the inspection technology issues. But at the end of the day, I have to rely on my staff who gives me a recommendation and what I know of those individuals. And so, if it doesn't work, if it's wrong, then Mr. DeJardin shouldn't take the heat, Mr. Camasi shouldn't take the heat, it should start with the manager. And I know that's the conversation I had with Mr. Lozso.
That's your question.
Counselor Lozso, I should say. And my gut tells me what we're doing is the right thing and I have complete faith in Mr. Camasi. And so, you know, if there's a problem, it's not going to end well for either one. And so, I'm counting on him to prove me right.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. We're going to take a vote on this now, because we've talked enough about it. So all was in favor of recommending this to town council for confirmation? One was opposed?
Abstained.
Okay. So one in favor, three opposed, one abstained. Thank you. Promotion to adjourn?
Yes.
One in favor?